Has that language, but it's never automatic without a request to the board and your approval.
Okay, moving up to page one hundred and seven, same AR, and again, that's Mrs. Deacon.
Outcome data, I'm sorry if I've missed that, but do we, when do we see this on a regular basis?
It's an annual report that we're obligated to give the board.
A certain time of year it comes regularly?
It varies. I will share with you that there is an expectation that that report will be presented to you very shortly.
Mrs. Deacon.
I had a question on that one on, it's on page one oh seven, number six. And this has to do with readmission, and it says, "If the board denies the readmission of a student, the board shall determine either to continue the student's placement in the alternative educational program initially selected or to place the student in another program that serves expelled students, including placement in a county, county community school." Typically, I've been under the, I mean, we've operated under the assumption that we don't really place the expelled students, that we, we off, I mean, we expel them from our district and the parent makes the decision of which program they will attend that's outside of our district. And this one is suggest, is saying that the board will decide where the student goes.
All right, let's go back to answer the first part of your question. By law, the district is obligated to provide an education, an educational alternative, even if I'm expelled. Our agreement with the county schools is that El Puente, their community schools will be that place. And as you know, the board last year approved for seventh graders that we would place them in community day school. However, this talks about the readmission of a student. Should we determine at the end of, let's say, a one-year expulsion, that the board is not going to permit that student, based on a recommendation from staff, that we're not going to permit that student to re-enter the Santa Barbara school districts, then this goes into effect. We begin to determine, the board begins to determine, where are we going to place this young person? Does he continue with El Puente? Do we place him in the community day school? Do we arrange another alternative? So staff would be bringing that case back to the board for consideration. Remember, this is all about denying the readmission of a student.
Okay, so it may be a semantic question then, because when we, currently when we expel a student, we, or at least we have, we have said it this way in, in our discussions, that we are expelling the student from our district. There is a free of charge public educational option for that student, which is El Puente. But the parents have the option of enrolling the student in some other kind of program.
That is correct.
So I was interpreting that as meaning we didn't place them, that the parent places the student in the option that they think is the most appropriate for the student.
That is also correct, but this section, again, only applies to a decision made by the district not to readmit the student back into the Santa Barbara school districts.
So if we choose not to readmit them, if we choose not to readmit the student, then would we have a different authority than we, than we do in the initial expulsion, which is to say that we're placing them as opposed to simply deny them access to our district and allowing the parent to make the choice of where the student goes?
We, assuming a parent wanted to enter the Santa Barbara school districts after an expulsion and staff's recommendation to the board is to deny that admissions, then the board is required by this section to provide the parents an option that they do not, that the parent is not obligated to accept.
Okay, that clarifies it. To me, the word place sounds like it's obligatory, that the parent, that that's where the student has to go. And so I'm wondering if we can maybe use language that makes it clear again that we provide the alternative option for the parents?
I, I would share with you that, again, as you, I would like to point out to the board, look at number six and see the parentheses that, that references an education code. Whenever you see that kind of statement, you can be assured that this is a phrase or a sentence or a paragraph that comes out of the education code. And again, we're very reticent to suggest to you any changes.
And I, I think that my question on that part would be, it's sort of, we are making the determination if the student wants to be in any way connected with the school district still. We're determining the placement. The, the parent can always choose not to take that placement, but then they're not, they're not sort of associating with us anymore. See what I'm saying?
I, I think I understand your point, but would they have any less association with us if their student went to, say, a private school as opposed to El Puente? Because if they're in El Puente, they're not one of our students. If they're in a private school, they're not one of our students. If they're in a private school and they satisfy the, the requirements of their expulsion, they still have the option of requesting a return to our district. So I'm wondering if, I mean, if there really is any distinguish, or distinction between a stu, a student who's expelled, so currently not in our district, between a, you know, if that student goes to El Puente or anyplace else, is there really any distinction between their relationship with us?
May I share with you one example that, that may clarify this issue? It's not unusual for students to want to participate in district programs that can only be found within the district, our athletic programs, our academies. Suppose we expelled a student, came back, and for whatever reasons, a decision, a recommendation from staff is not to readmit that student, but the student wants to participate, let's say, in a football, in the sport of football. Well, this section here authorizes the board to make some placement, some specialized placement, what we call an alternative educational program that would theoretically permit him or her to participate in this program, but not be enrolled in that particular high school. Now, we've not had those cases yet, and, but this is in preparation for. Okay?
Okay, now we are moving to page one hundred and eleven. This is AR five one four four point two, suspension and expulsion due process, students with disabilities. And that's Mrs. Deacon.
I guess my question, and it is just a question again, is in, let's see, about the fourth paragraph down, the paragraph that begins with a student who has been removed. At the end of that paragraph, it says, "As appropriate, the student shall also receive a functional behavioral assessment, behavioral intervention services and modifications." And these, these are about special needs students, is that right?
That's correct.
So I'm wondering how this compares to what we offer students who are not special needs students who've also been in this setting. We're, we're not required to provide them with a behavioral assessment, is that right?
No, no, this is typ, this is typically, you see this functional behavior assessment in IEPs and, yeah.
Seems like it might be nice to be able to offer this to our other students as well.
Moving on to one hundred and fifteen, AR five one four five point nine, hate motivated behavior. Mrs. Deacon.
Number four, it's, I guess it's the innovation response team. The IRT shall be convened immediately when an incident is reported. I noticed, looking at this team, we have a student, a psychologist, a teacher, a counselor, a principal. I'm just wondering how immediate a team like that could actually be assembled and...
Our past experiences, it's a function of minutes.
That's terrific, okay. So is an IRT, is that in the, is it listed who those people are in their site safety plans, or?
I do not believe the school site safety plans address this. Let me share with you a bit of background of this policy. You will not find this particular policy in CSBA. It was a locally developed policy with a previous superintendent following, we believe, an incident that occurred at one of our high schools. And this was a very specific means of addressing, at that time, a, a very ugly bias motivated incident that took place. A discussion took place among staff, should it be presented to the board? The final decision was, yes, let's present it to the board, give them a bit of background, and we go from there.
And moving on to the back page, to that, page one hundred and sixteen, Mrs. Deacon.
Actually, my question was about the school safety plans and whether that was in there or not, so ditto.
Gotcha. Now we move on to page one hundred and...
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I had, I forgot that I had this question on this one, on the back, on page one sixteen. Just the forms that it mentions, that it references at the very end, do, do we have those? Where are those forms located?
In previous years, all of those forms went to the Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Education. With the reorganization, it falls with our Associate Superintendent.
Is this one of those forms that can be, that's on or could be on the Intranet so that sites can just download it when they need it, rather than having to supply them to the school offices?
Yes.
Yeah, where are they?
Question, if I wanted one today, where would I get it, the form?
From the Associate Superintendent's office.
Okay, moving on to page one hundred and twenty-one. This is AR fifty-one forty-eight point three, preschool early childhood education. Mrs. Deacon.
Mrs. Deacon, surprise, surprise.
Sorry, page one twenty-one.
One twenty-one. You know, this is actually, this is one of those really nitpicky stylistic things, which I don't need to happen, I just wanted to point it out because as I'm adding acronyms to my vernacular, and I learned that CSP stands for California State Preschool Program. Every time we use that acronym, it's followed by the word program. So we've really got California State Preschool Program, program, but maybe it's okay.
Let me suggest that we spell that out. I do know that we have it spelled out up above, California State Preschool Program, CSP. Doesn't look like we use it all that many times there.
Or you could just get rid of the word program.
We could just get rid of it.
Yeah, I know this is a copy straight out of CSBA, and some of it looks like from ed code, interesting.
Okay, we could just omit program.
Major, major, major.
And then we move on to the AR fifty-one forty-four, which is up for review. And to page two, Mrs. Deacon, if you want to start with that one.
Yeah, this, I'm interested in recess restriction here. And I had thought that when we had previously reviewed this, Mrs. Parker had actually asked for that to be deleted, and I see it's still there.
Right, and that's why I actually asked for this. I realized afterwards that we spent time on the board policy and we just neglected that number three at the top of page two. And my suggestion is that we simply remove number three to be in line with the policy and wellness policy.
Can I, in preparation for this, I knew this was coming up. And I know we did talk about this before, but I pulled the ed code on that, the reference on that. And it just, it does say it's four four eight oh seven point five recess restrictions. The governing board of the school district may adopt reasonable rules and regulations to authorize a teacher to restrict for disciplinary purposes the time pupil, under his or her supervision, is allowed for recess. So it is a may. I know, you know, that it's called on, this came up a lot during the wellness policy and PE and all. So you do have the right under that to put that in, or I guess take it out.
We, we could still restrict it.
Without eliminating it?
Except for, except for we say in, in the wellness policy specifically, that we will not. And so I'm reluctant to have two policies that are...
Should we ask Lane if that's an issue? No, I, I, no, no, I'm just, I'm just kidding.
Well, I know he spoke to, he spoke to it before, so, yeah.
Well, I, I think that to be consistent with our wellness policy and our, our philosophy embedded in the wellness policy, that it would, this would, restricting access to physical activity would be contrary to the philosophy that we've embedded in that other policy. So I'd prefer to just see this deleted.
It has been a topic of discussion over a couple, maybe three years, with the Elementary Parent Advisory Committee, and they strongly want this out. They feel like it's very important for particularly certain students at certain ages to be outside. And I know we've kind of passed along some of those articles on test scores even increase with more activity outside. So being aware of all those issues.
No, I, philosophically, I just would like to see it go. I mean, I think if the problems are occasionally generated by, you know, poor discipline and then we don't give chance, kids a chance to blow steam, the problems just ensue, so we're, it's counterproductive.
All right, that brings us to the end of the 5,000 series. We are exactly on time for our fifteen minute, oh, sorry, ten minute break. So let's go ahead and, without objections, take a break at this time. Mr. Heron has had a family emergency and has had to leave. And so we will continue on and start the 6,000 series and see how far we get. And we will certainly take public comment on that. So let's go ahead and start item, you know, I'm sitting here looking at the wrong...
May I introduce?
I just want to read this off. This is item C three, first reading of 6,000 series board policies and administrative regulations.
Well, this also is a long list of policies. And you know, the, the last group that we went through are the remaining 5,000 series. So it represents only about some one-third of what we had already gone through in the 5,000 series. I'd like to acknowledge Barbara Kiani's work on this. She carries the primary responsibility for keeping track of all these policies, making sure they're available on the district website. And no one's happier than Barbara to see them get upgraded, updated, and available to all. Making this presentation, though, since we are talking about just, just a number of school adminis, I'm sorry, number of school administrative and instructional areas, is Robin Sowoski, our Associate Superintendent.
Okay, yes, these are the ones that are directly tied to instruction. And at the, the end of that first section, you will note again that on the notes, there's replacements marked and deletions. And I want to echo Dr. Sarvis's appreciation for Barbara Kiani and Linda Steele. They both did an incredible job in kind of checking and cross-referencing and making sure that we had everything in place, because this was a large group, as you know, to bring forward. So I guess, do we do public comment now, or?
Yes, I'll go ahead and take public comment. There is one speaker on this, Kate Smith.
Members of the Santa Barbara Board of Education. I have a total of fourteen issues, but I only have three minutes. So I would like to talk to the board policy sixty twenty, parent involvement, and the board policy that has to do with complaints about special education. I was arrested under a statute that allowed a principal to arrest drug dealers, pimps, and child molesters, but it excluded parents from the school. That was called a false arrest. I was arrested four times, and there was a restraining order that was obtained against me on perjured testimony. In the settlement of my daughter's due process, there was a very odd thing that you were supposed to expunge my arrest records. My arrest and what happened to me had nothing to do with my daughter's lawsuit, nothing to do with the parent. And therefore, it wasn't discussed in that due process, which was the nation's most expensive, most complex, and the Fed's Office of Silver Eyes called it the most pathetic. Here's a compliance complaint. I started it. It was my second. The first one was a total loss for you. And the second one was so serious that the California Department of Education head of legal, his name is Michael Hersher, asked Maureen Graves to write this. They refused to read it or investigate, saying that, oh, this was handled in my daughter's lawsuit. So I've waited for ten years to say this is being resubmitted. I tried to get Robin Oaks to read it. I tried to get FICMAT to read it. Arnie Duncan wants to read it now. All of the policies that you have approved include illegal, unethical, uncivil policies that promote programs and practices that are damaging our child.
Thirty seconds.
There's a rally in Washington, May sixteenth. It's on the fifty-fifth anniversary of Brown versus Board of Education. There is institutionalized racism and child abuse, and the school administration has lost sight of the educational mission. I will use the court system, court of public opinion and small claims. There are eight. The first one is happening May fifteenth. I will be subpoenaing some of you to come.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
We followed through on our agreement to help Ms. Smith expunge your record in 2003. I periodically remind her of that and send her the materials.
Thank you for trying.
Thank you.
No. Mrs. Smith?
No.
Okay, so for this 6,000 series, we're going to be just, I don't have the numbers on this one. So we'll run through, we'll get through what we can. My first comment question is on page thirteen. Does anybody have anything before page thirteen? Okay, on page thirteen, I don't have a recommendation yet, but this is on both page thirteen and page fourteen. There's a reference to parents, guardians, monitoring, attendance, homework completion, and television viewing. And I think that television viewing should be broadened into something more like media, media usage, something like that.
Okay, yeah.
So it includes online gaming, all those things that kids get distracted by. So that's for me, page thirteen and fourteen. Which item is, sorry, I'll try to remember to do that. This is...
Page thirteen, middle of the page B.
And this is AR sixty twenty, parent involvement. So moving along, my next item is series 6,000, page twenty-two. Anything before that for people? For my twenty-two, the commemorative exercises. District schools shall hold exercises to commemorate the following special days. And I know from my own personal experience that nobody is commemorating Susan B. Anthony Day or Classified Employee Week in terms of student commemoration. I know that the district is doing things, but district schools, my children have never participated in anything to do with Classified Employee Week. And I don't think that anything is being done, in particular for Black American Day. I know that they talk a lot about Black History Month. And so I'm just a little concerned that either we're mandating too much or we're, or our schools aren't following through. I don't know if this was something that was in place before and they just haven't been doing it. And so, board members, I don't know if you have any comments on this section?
We, I happened to be in high school when the federal government recognized Susan B. Anthony Day. And I made a point of insisting that it be celebrated every year. It became a running joke with my history professor. I would actually, even after I graduated from high school, go into his room and write, "Happy Susan B. Anthony Birthday." Susan B. Anthony's birthday on February fifteenth. So I hope, because if you will note, that in this list, it's the only one that specifically identifies a female person that we recognize. So I hope that we actually can figure out a way to help encourage schools to acknowledge it rather than allow it to...
Just fade away?
To fade away.
Could we, could we add the language, "District schools shall be encouraged to hold exercises to commemorate the following special days?"
Sure.
I like that better. It gives the schools flexibility to add other individuals or issues to celebrate. And I don't know if we would want to expand the, I mean, this list seems a little bit minimalist. I mean, there's lots of, but, but maybe it's a mistake to try to delineate everything you could possibly celebrate, you know?
I, I believe, and this again is a CSBA template, so, and it's not in ed code, so it doesn't say you have to do this, but this is kind of the standard template that is used. I would imagine that in the case of adding additional ones, and, you know, sometimes there's local kinds of celebrations or people you would honor, you would be adding to that. And you're right, by trying to increase the list, it would be, this is a lot, like, right now, we know of two that probably aren't being celebrated or...
At least not consistently.
Yeah, commemorated.
But, yeah, we know Black History Month, I think, is routinely celebrated, and it's not on the list, so...
And again, these policies, we have to make sure, and Michael has been talking a lot with principals, we need to make sure that as these are passed, as a principal in our district, you don't necessarily get these things. That's our job now to make sure, because we have this huge volume, volume of board policies that have been revised and updated, that really affect them in big ways, the 5,000s and 6,000s.
Well, and do our schools commemorate Women's History Month?
I believe, I've seen, yes, I've seen, I'm going to say everyone does, I'm, because our lib, I know that our, no?
I'm going to say new, because...
No, okay.
The elementary and, certainly the elementary school that my child...
Didn't go, okay, because I remember Nancy Tobin actually talking about that.
Well, and it may be that there are things going on, like there are displays in the library.
Sure, yes.
And that can absolutely be happening, and parents may not be aware of it.
Right.
So that's something to, to note. Let's see, for me, the next on the list is page thirty-two. Does anybody have anything before page thirty-two?
Actually, I identified thirty-two as well.
Okay? All right, so page thirty-two is BP sixty-one forty-one point five, advanced placement courses and exams. For me, the problematic paragraph is one, two, three, four, the fifth one down, which is, "In order for students to receive AP credit on their high school transcripts, they are required to take the AP exam as part of the rigor associated with these courses. Students who do not take the exam will receive honors credit on their transcripts." And I actually brought the old policy. My concern with this is that our board focus goal is to encourage, especially underrepresented, more underrepresented students to take, not the test, to take AP courses. And if they think that if they take the course and they get halfway through and they're struggling with it, but they, they want to stick with it, if they realize that they're going to go through all that and then not get the AP credit at the end, even though they've done all of the coursework that every other student has, and the only thing that they won't have done is take the exam, I'm concerned that that will actually discourage students and harm our, our attempts to, to increase that. And in fact, the old language was, it didn't include anything about that, about having to take the exam. And what it included at the end was, "The district will provide a weighted grade for AP courses regardless of whether students take the exam," which it essentially says here too, because if you be, if you're not taking AP, then you become honors. So, but I would just go back to the old language. I would consider removing that paragraph and then adding the old language about the district will provide a weighted grade for AP. I don't know.
I can give some history, but we can hear from board members first.
No, no, my thinking actually was very similar, based just on my own children's experiences. And I don't think this honors option was even an effect, probably, when they...
No, it wasn't.
So this is new.
This is new.
But you still get a weighted grade regardless of whether it's designated AP or honors.
That's correct. Where this came from was a request from the high school principals. We actually had quite a lengthy discussion about this. We did some research on it. We did some research on it. And we found that many districts are moving to this. And I'm, I, you know, I'm gonna leave my, I mean, my recommendation is to go with what you want, 'cause I think both sides have validity. Our high school principals were saying that students, some students, sign up for the class to get it on their transcript and they don't really, you know, they'd have no intention of even taking the test. And they contend that the test itself is just as important. Taking that and being prepared for it and really gearing up for it is really that high level that they want students to be engaged in, because that's more like college. And just taking the test, taking the class to have that AP on there when they apply for college. Of course, in the end, it's still gonna be on there when they apply and it would be their transcript that you get the honors or not. They felt like that would encourage more students to actually take the test. Now, the test is free, of course, for anyone who can't pay, so there's no problem with not being able to take the test. Anyone can take the test.
Well, but it's, it's at least eighty dollars if you can afford to pay, which is a chilling effect on taking the test for seniors who already accepted into college.
That's true.
I agree. I don't, I don't think it's, it's true that there's no, that, that there's no financial problem with students taking the test, because there are people who cannot afford to pay that, who don't qualify.
Oh, don't qua, I see what you're saying. And if you're taking several, that can be quite expensive.
Right, right. I, my concern with that, and I, I'm really glad you brought that up, 'cause I had overlooked it and I really have a major problem with this, is as a teacher, if my concern is that the students aren't taking my class serio, the work in my class seriously enough, unless they gear up for this major final at the end, it seems to me I would make my content more rigorous rather than requiring them to take the test. Because it really does seem unfair that a student has taken, has taken a semester of the coursework, has completed all the coursework, has received a grade in the class, and won't get the designation unless they take a test for which we acknowledge we cannot afford to pay for. It says, the district is unable to cover the cost of advanced placement exams except for students who qualify under free and reduced lunch eligibility. So it seems to me completely unreasonable to require the students to pay that fee in order to get credit for work they've already done.
Well, it seems like it's clear to me that the board members who are here will, and, and again, we're just bringing forward what the high school principals recommended and it's fine.
And, and I can understand it. I mean, and honestly, it is something that we look at. I mean, we do ask for the data, how many kids have taken the test and how many kids have taken the course. But I think really for us, the most important thing is have the students taken the course. And the, the AP exam and looking at pass rates, for example, is sort of a question of, are we, it's sort of an assessment. Are we, are we, for the students that do take it, are we providing the, the information that they need as the, as the class being structured the way that they need in order to be successful?
Or even comparing the same class offered in different settings and how well students are performing against each other.
Yeah, and I think that, I also wouldn't wanna do this without a lot of parent input, just because the UCs and CSUs, they don't care if the kids have taken tests. And so if another district has it and they're getting AP credit for, and they haven't taken the test, but suddenly Santa Barbara, you're not gonna get AP credit if you haven't taken the test, then this child might be at a disadvantage in admissions. And, and so that would be another, a whole other can of worms that we could open.
Yeah, it's absolutely fine. And I think, you know, keeping in mind the board focus goal, if it's your opinion that that would discourage more students from taking, then that would not be in alignment with that, so that makes sense.
Okay, so let's see. My next stop is on page thirty-eight. Anybody have anything before page thirty-eight? And then this is, hard to read. This is AR sixty-one forty-two point one, Sexual Health and HIV/AIDS Prevention Instruction. I noted, and I don't have the material here from the, from the existing policy. I remember thinking at the time that it was sort of outdated. But number seven, instruction and materials shall teach respect for marriage and committed relationships. And I just wanted other board members to reflect on whether that was adequate in terms of, I feel like there's such sort of a schism in California society right now that that's a little bit awkward. But I don't know if, if having it be and committed relationships is enough to try to balance out the fact that we have marriage in there when some members of the public are not able to marry. Hmm, Mrs. Cordero?
I'm wondering what the, what the ultimate goal of that is. I, I'm, I'm assuming that it's to encourage young people to want to establish a committed relationship of their own rather than to sort of in, have them think that very casual relationships are the desired mode. But, but I'm not sure that that, number one, that that language does it. And then number two, that that's exactly what we're trying to get, that that's exactly what we wanna get across. And I'm wondering if we could, if we could just make it broader to respect for human relationships, respect for relationships. It seems to me that there's somewhat nebulous as to what we really wanna accomplish with that statement.
Well, I, I think I understand what was originally intended in this statement, but as you bring up, there's multiple ways to look at, at our intent now. I, I actually would feel a little bit more comfortable coming back to this one after having thought about it. I wouldn't wanna make a snap judgment, because I, I value committed relationships and I think maybe, you know, it's a healthy lifestyle choice and I think maybe that's kind of the direction this is going. But I'd like to think a little bit more about a good way to articulate that.
Okay, so let's think about that.
Maybe healthy relationships.
Let's see, next on my list is page forty-five. Anything from page one thirty?
You know what, on thirty-nine, I just, on number ten, on page thirty-nine, it might flow a little bit better if at the word, if you, after the word pregnancy, we put a comma and the word and rather, that, that second sentence is, it is a complete sentence, but it's, it doesn't flow as well as the rest of the text.
On other methods of preventative-
You see, I think it was, it was edited and a word or two dropped out. But we could just put pregnancy, comma, and, teach that abstinence.
Gotcha. That makes sense.
Or something else.
That makes sense.
Okay.
Any other comments on page thirty-nine?
Where was that?
I'm sorry, this is still in the same AR, Sexual Health and HIV/AIDS Prevention. At the top of page thirty-nine, number ten, there's a second sentence that starts with a capital T for teach. And instead of having that capital T, put a comma and lowercase t for teach. Okay. So moving on to page forty-five. This was the second, uh, sorry, the section on BP sixty-one forty-two point three, Civic Education. And again, this Constitution Citizenship Day. I, I don't, I, I haven't ever seen it, so.
That is something, and actually, our county office is really good about sending out a reminder in advance every single year. There's a whole web, there's a list of websites, there's a reminder, there's the requirements, there's the ed code involved. And we send that and forward it to schools every single year. So, I mean, it hasn't been placed that long, but that, I don't know exactly what happens in the schools, but we mention it to principals, remind them and pass it on to teachers, that it's there.
Barbara typically sends materials to the site and says, remember, you must engage in a Constitution Day activity, and they vary by site.
Okay. Next on my list takes me to page seventy-six. Anything before page seventy-six? Okay, on page seventy-six, that's in AR sixty-one forty-three, Courses of Study. And in section six, number six here, we're still talking about grade first through sixth education. And I had some concerns about a couple of the subsections here. So it's talking about, the adopted courses study shall provide instruction at the appropriate grade levels and subject areas in. And again, this is first through sixth graders, learning personal and public safety and accident prevention, that seems fine. Instructions and, including instruction in emergency first aid, hemorrhage control, treatment for poisoning, resuscitation techniques and CPR when appropriate equipment is available. And I'm just not sure that anybody, if you're talking about first through sixth grade, that there, that that's appropriate for those. Some of those things are appropriate for grade lo, that grade, those grade levels. And then moving down to D, venereal disease. I, I don't know that our children in first through sixth get instruction on venereal disease.
I would have to look more closely at like sixth grade. Again, this is ed code.
Right.
And I was looking for a term that we often see as appropriate to the age, but I don't see it in here necessarily.
Well, it says, I think what it says in ed code is appropriate grade levels. And then we have all that in seventh through twelfth where it clearly would be appropriate.
At the appropriate grade levels, okay.
But then, and it's, it's sort of subset under grades one through six. And I'm just not sure that that's even in the curriculum for those grades at all. So just a little research on whether that should be in the seventh through twelfth section rather, just in seventh through twelfth rather than grades-
Well, I know that ed code would say it's here. However, Cynthia just sent me a note, we are adopting a new sex ed curriculum that the nurses have gone through thoroughly and, and the wellness committee. And so we'll look to see where that is.
I, I would suspect in sixth grade, there is discussion of sexually transmitted disease.
I think there probably is.
I, I'd just like some clarification on that.
Mrs. Parker, I, I realized I had something on page seventy-one.
Okay. Let's see, page seventy-one, this is sixty-one forty-two point nine three, the board policy on science instruction.
Right. Being mindful that it is the two-hundredth anniversary of Charles Darwin, I, I, I actually just wanted to address this one sentence in the third paragraph that says, such beliefs shall not be discussed in science classes but may be addressed in the social science and language arts curriculum. I'm trying to envision a science class where a science, a biology teacher might not wanna say to the class, I understand there are differing beliefs about evolution. We're not, you know, we're talking about science in this class, but I just wanna acknowledge that there are varying beliefs. I, it seems to me almost awkward to ban even acknowledgement of different perspectives. I'm not advocating teaching creation science.
Thank you, Mrs. Deacon. I, I don't know that it's, it says that you can't announce it. It says such beliefs shall not be discussed.
Discussed, okay. I just didn't wanna so handcuff a teacher that if a student asked a question, you know, they would, you know, have to default to something like, we can't talk about that in this class, you know?
Right, I tend to think it's more like what Mrs. Parker said. I mean, it's not gonna be a part of the curriculum. I remember when we reviewed this section, we were very careful about what, what we put in, thinking about how it would play out in a classroom.
Right.
Would you like us to add or put, again, this isn't ed code, exact words. We could describe that more.
This is ed code, exact words you said, or is not?
No, it is not, it is not.
I'm wondering if we could say taught.
Or, or even teachers may acknowledge, you know, varying beliefs, but, you know, instruction is limited to-
Like such beliefs may be, are-
Varying beliefs may be acknowledged?
I, I think that Mrs. Cordero's word would be taught. Such beliefs shall not be taught in science classes. Doesn't mean that you couldn't have like a rock and discussion about it, you know, for five minutes if they would.
But yeah, that's, I mean, that's the point I wanted to make, is that I just didn't want, you know,
Thank you.
the cone of silence to, to stand.
Okay, for me, the next question is on page eighty-one. Anything before, yes, Mrs. Deacon?
Seventy-five.
Oh.
Page seventy-five. All right, so that's back on AR sixty-one forty-three, Courses of Study, grades one through six.
Number three, letter A, where the sentence begins, instructions shall include the early history of California and a study of the role and contributions of men and women, Black Americans, American Indians, Mexicans. Wouldn't it be more appropriate to say Latinos, or is it, I mean, I don't. All these other groups are ethnic groups, this is a country. Now, I'm, I mean, I'm going back to my fourth grade California history.
I would respond that that's ed code. Now, maybe ed code hasn't been updated to, you know, I, I don't know what to say other than that it's ed code and that's usually what we use until those are updated.
Early California history was primarily Mexican.
I was, I mean-
So that must be the refer, yes.
So, okay, so it's not Latin America per se, or it's strictly Mexico.
I'm trying to think of what aspects of early California history would be beyond, I mean, I would say Spain and Mexico.
Right, right, which might lead me to wanna put Latinos.
Yeah. I think you definitely could say Spain and Mexico. But I don't, like, I'm thinking Cuba, you know, South America, not so much involved in early American, or early California history.
Just to clarify, the, the language, if you continue to read, it also talks about other ethnic groups to the economic, political, and social development of California. But those words, including the word Mexican, are, are from the California Education Code. And again, we, we tend not to deviate from the language in the code.
That's fine, that's fine. I just, I was struck that all the others were, were kind of larger ethnic groups and, you know, this seemed more specific, but. And on, on number D, Eastern and Western cultures, maybe Western wants to be capitalized.
Okay. All right, anything else up to page eighty-one? All right, on page eighty-one, it's AR sixty-one forty-four, Controversial Issues. This, and it's not controversial, which is number eight. This is just one of the listings, this one happened to have sexual orientation left off of the list. And also, usually it's referred to as physical disability as opposed to handicap.
Oh.
And that is just a difference there. And I know that, of course, this is one of the lists that Mrs. Cordero would like to add, you know, take a look at all of these lists in terms of language.
Okay.
Any other comments on page eighty-one?
On number D is the word, sorry, one D, respect for the differing opinions of others?
I think that was supposed to be others.
Others, yes, I think it's supposed to be others. Oh. And, Mrs. Deacon?
I'm sorry, there was something I had a question about. I apologize, I'm not identifying the question that I had. Oh. Number seven. This falls under the category of controversial issues may be discussed in a classroom provided that. And then it says, discussion or study of the issue is instigated by the students or by the established curriculum but not by a source outside of the schools. And I wasn't sure what that meant.
Does it mean that somebody can't come into a, an outsider can't come into a classroom and?
It seems, I, I, we hadn't really looked at it in that regard before. I, that seems like what it means. The established curriculum would be not only what the teacher's using, but the teacher actually directing the curriculum. So between the teacher and the student.
The reason I'm, I mean, I, I can understand, but it seemed to me that it's possible that some source outside of the schools, uh, maybe a, a guest speaker or something, um, could raise an issue that would fit these other criteria. But would it come from somebody else other than one, than the student or the curriculum?
My guess is that we're using it as a firewall so that, so that, uh, sources outside the community can't come in and demand or, or push the issues. But teachers often make teachable moments from things that are community issues. So, uh, perhaps the word "instigated" is the key word. A teacher could certainly follow up on community issues or on issues that are, uh, that arise from outside the school. Instigated.
I guess what I'm, what I'm thinking is, I understand, like, we don't, I, I wouldn't, you know, if I were the teacher in the classroom, I wouldn't want some outside group to come in and say, "You have to discuss this topic." Um, but at the same time, um, if an outside group brought up an issue that seemed appropriate for what we were discussing, just because it's not instigated by the students or the curriculum doesn't-
But I think that in that case, the teacher would, the teacher would be, and it would be back up to, you know, the issues related to the course of study, um, you know, so the, the teacher could make that, that call on whether it's something that he or she is bringing forward as part of the, something that's relevant to the curriculum, as opposed to, uh, um, an, an outside source coming in without either teacher, uh, approval or student interest.
I, I mean, I, to me, the concern is we, there are potentially outside groups you don't want to be setting the agenda for what is being discussed in the class,
Right.
and that's the reason why you want a student to bring an issue forward that's of legitimate interest to them.
I guess I'm always seeing it from the point of view of limiting discussion, you know, I, I, I wanna give, uh, students and teachers as much latitude as possible to discuss the topics that they think are interesting in their, and, and valuable in their classroom.
Mm-hmm.
So, and from the way that this reads, it says, "You can only discuss controversial issues if this happens." So it says, "If the issue is instigated by the students or by the established curriculum." Which means that as a parent, I might be able to come in and say, "You can't discuss that topic 'cause a student didn't bring it up." "You violated your own policy. It was brought up by something else." So, I'm wondering if we could say something like, um, discussion, uh, discussion or study of the issue is pursued by the students, or is-
How about using the, uh, "but" clause at the end and saying something, well, if I were to put it in very simple terms, I'd say, "But not simply at the request of a source outside the schools."
Ah, but not simply, that's, that's good.
I mean, that seems to me to be a pretty straightforward statement.
By a request, you said, or just-
Not simply at the request.
Okay.
So that makes the linkage to the student.
Of, a source outside the school.
I think it is a, a way of protecting the curriculum and the instructional time and, uh, you know.
Yes.
Okay, uh, next for me was page eighty-five. Anything before page eighty-five? On page eighty-five, it's AR sixty-one forty-five, Extracurricular and Co-curricular Activities. My question was on number one down at the bottom. Um, and this is about the eligibility standards. One is citizenship. To participate, a student must maintain a two-point-oh citizenship grade at each quarterly marking period. This just may be something that I don't know about the high schools, but there, there isn't, um, you know, it's, it's O's, S's, or N's.
Point value.
In the very code.
So I don't know what a two-point-oh citizenship grade is.
What are they doing there?
I think this is a holdup.
Yeah, yeah. We'll need to make this consistent with our report card, 'cause it is U's and N's and isn't it?
It's an S's and O's.
Yeah, right.
S's and N's, yes.
And how do I determine an average?
Right, exactly. So I, I, what I think is in place is that coaches say, "You can't participate if you have any N's or U's." Um, but I don't know if that's what it is.
It, it's typically a number of unsats, uh, unsatisfactory marks, yeah.
Right.
Okay, so that, just sort of to clarify that language. Um, moving forward, my next section is on Okay, um, page ninety-six. Anything before page ninety-six? Um, this is AR sixty-one forty-five point five, Student Organizations and Equal Access. And down at the very bottom, uh, there's a paragraph that says, "The superintendent or designee shall identify the non-instructional time period set aside for non-curriculum-related student organization meetings, i.e. clubs, before or after actual classroom instructional times. Meeting shall not be held during the lunch hour." But I think that a lot of clubs meet during the lunch hour.
Yeah, you're right.
So, can we just-
I don't wanna, I don't wanna do that.
So can we just get rid of that one line, "Meeting shall not be held during the lunch hour?"
Yeah. Huh, I wonder where that came from. Don't remember seeing that.
It's probably just in, you know, CSBA language, but, okay. Any other comments there? My next one is all the way up to page one-twenty-six. Anything before page one-twenty-six? And this is BP sixty-one fifty-one, Class Size, and of course, it's the section on class size reduction in grades K-three. So I'm not sure how to handle this. Um, 'cause as it stands, it says, "The superintendent or designee shall pursue a policy that classes and primary grades designated by the board are reduced to twenty or fewer students per teacher in accordance with law." And I don't know, if this is just something, when it comes back for the next reading, we will have better language. But then again, it may change every year. I mean, it feels like we're in a sort of a state of flux with, with the K-three class size reduction.
I know. Could we add something about, uh, except in the event, or in the case of flexibility, or, uh, I, fiscal crisis that allows flexibility or something?
Could we, could you think of some language to put in there?
Yeah, let's think of that. Yes.
Well, we'll know at the next board meeting what, uh, class size reduction looks like.
Right.
But we do need that flexibility, we think.
Yeah.
And, um, at this point, this is where my, my flags end, so I'm just gonna start running through the, uh, numbers, uh, sort of page numbers. No, actually, I'm not gonna do it that way. I'm gonna do it by board policy numbers as I go through. So, anybody have anything on, uh, sixty-one fifty-two?
Nope.
AR sixty-one fifty-three? AR sixty-one, uh, sorry, BP sixty-one fifty-four, AR sixty-one fifty-four. BP sixty-one fifty-five, AR sixty-one fifty-five?
I, I had a question about sixty-one fifty-five. It says, if it, on, on page one-thirty-nine, underneath the one, two, three, four, "If a petition is denied, an appeal can be made to the principal of the school in which the student is enrolled." The, is there any further appeal process, or is that the final step?
We hadn't put any other appeal process in place. We can. I mean, I talk to parents about these types of things.
It just seems to me that normally, we don't end that at the site level. It would usually go to the district administration or even to the board.
Right.
For, for an appeal.
We can add that, we can lift language from, I mean, there's a lot of policies in here that have that language.
And it could be like, "The super de-" you know, "The superintendent or designee, and then that decision shall be final."
The superintendent or designee, yeah.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. BP sixty-one fifty-eight. AR sixty-one fifty-eight. BP sixty-one fifty-nine. AR sixty-one fifty-nine.
That was a long.
Sorry, that was a very long one. BP sixty-one fifty-nine point one.